Good evening. This is Eastline Board of Selectmen regular meeting of February 5th, 2025 in Eastline Town Hall, upper meeting room at 7:00. We, at our earlier meeting, we recited the Pledge of Allegiance. And so we'll move on to the consent calendar items. There are no additional agenda items that I'm aware of. So we'll go to the consent calendar items.
Okay. Move to approve the consent calendar for February 5th, 2025 in the amount of $6,379.99.
Are you approving the consent calendar already, or are we just doing?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, oh, we just, oh, I'm sorry, you're right. No, you're right.
Oh, oh, all right.
You're right, Jason. I always do that. I jump the gun here. Okay, so we, there are no additions to the consent calendar.
Correct.
And we'll get to that in a couple of minutes. But the next thing is delegations. Are there any public delegations that wish to address the Board of Selectmen this evening? Anyone wishes to address the board? Okay. Do we have, no? Please. If you would just state your name and address for the record.
Well, I'm speaking on behalf of Mary Weekly, who's in Colorado.
Okay, and your name though?
Terry Saffioti.
Oh, okay.
60 Rogers Lake Trail Line.
Okay.
She's drafted a letter here. Actually, you're going to get a copy of it, I believe, as well. Then I'll speak on my behalf after I read her letter.
Sure.
Mrs. Weekly is a widow of retired Officer James Weekly, who served several years with the Eastline Police Department. And some people on board may know that already. And her address, Mrs. Weekly's address is 13962 West 87th Street Drive, excuse me, in Darvaro, Colorado. I am, I'll continue, one, I am one of four retirees under the annuity plan. I have received my, her 24, 1099 tax form, and the taxable amount was the same as the gross. So there are no corrections ever made at this time to her 1099. Kevin Javarez could not only, could only find three, go back three years to date the payroll records for her husband. His true contribution amounts are not known at this time. Kevin stated that in January 6th pension meeting, that he would come up with the amount and have that to her the next morning. This was a month ago. I have, I have yet to hear from Kevin. With that said, I have done only my own research, which is able to construct Jim's regular wages and the amount he contributed to his pension from the contracts available. So contracts, she's talking about union contracts. I would like to have the discussion offline to compare Kevin's numbers with hers. Also, I stated several, sent several emails to Kevin. I have paid double taxes for 20 years and not, have not agreed to with the 14-year reimbursement plan. So I guess that was something that was previously discussed and with Kevin and the selectmen or the, and the board, I guess, for that matter. I watched the 11, the 1/15/2025 Board of Finance video with Kevin, where Kevin stated he would meet with the tax attorney and the pension attorney and stated that this was a win-win, a course of action for all. It's not a win for me, she says. She's 71 years old, 14 years. In 14 years, she'll be 85 if I live that long. So she's not able to collect the amount, I guess, that she feels she's entitled to. I think I should have some input in the reimbursement plan. I have come up with a fair reimbursement plan that we can discuss before any implementation. If you took, if you took out a loan and agreed to pay 5% interest and, and later found out that you actually paid 10% interest, you'd be concerned to the, with the bank. And, and the bank that they agreed to pay, pay too much. I would accept a multi-year reimbursement plan. That's questionable. I, I would guess not. So she doesn't go along with the reimbursement plan that Kevin's come up with thus far. She wants something other than that. That's Mrs. Weekly's presentation. And now we go with mine. I just want to thank all the ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Selectmen for, this is our third meeting, I believe, that we've had over this whole incident with the pension plan. And I also want to thank Mrs. Levandowski for her involvement and efforts. She's been leading the charge here with this whole thing as well as everybody else, myself, Donnie Marr, and a few other people that are present. I was involved in law enforcement here in the town of Eastline for 38 years, becoming an Eastline officer in 1982, part-time, of course. I did seven years as a part-timer officer and was appointed a full-time police officer in 1989 and retiring in 2020. The last 15 years I had been in supervisor capacity as a patrol sergeant for the town of, the Eastline Police Department. I just wanted to start my first, state my first experience with the Board of Finance Office back in April of last year. Donnie Marr, retired Detective Donnie Marr, in conversation with me, asked me if I had received a 1% cost of living increase that I was entitled to in our contract as part of our pension plan. After some research and checking, I was surprised to find that two years, the two years of my retirement, I had not received any such increase in my retirement statement. And I don't know why that happened. I don't, I'm sure it wasn't Kevin's fault, or if not, his, maybe it was US Bank. I don't know who dropped the ball, but somebody did, and I wasn't receiving those increased, cost of living increases, which are in our contract. On April 2nd, I drafted a letter addressed to Kevin Javarez. And the Finance Director of the Town of Eastline expressing my concern of some unknown reason that I had not received the two-years' cost of living increase. I have that letter here. If the Board of Selectmen want a copy of it, I have copies right on hand for you after the meeting as well. This letter was received by the town on April 5th because it was certified letter. I waited until the end of April to see if this had been corrected by Kevin Javarez. My thought was that if it, it was, I would see an increase in my finance, in my pension check, which I did not. I decided to stop by the Finance Office and speak with Kevin Javarez to see if he had received a letter that I had sent certified mail. And I was informed that he was in a meeting with the First Selectman Cunningham. So on May 13th, I went to the Finance for Finance Office again to speak to Kevin Javarez and explained my purpose to a female employee in the office. She stated that I would have to speak to someone in Human Resources. Why that is, I have no idea, but downstairs I went. I talked with Stacy Konakowicz and explained my situation to her. And she stated that she would reach out to Kevin Javarez and that he would be in touch with me. That same day, I received a call from Kevin Javarez, and he asked me to give him a few days and that he should have it straightened out by that, by then. So a week went by, and I was waiting. After not hearing from Kevin Javarez for a week, I decided to return to the Finance Office a third time. I caught Kevin Javarez in his office and explained my problem with the cost of living and had been worked. And he explained to me that the cost of living had been, issue had been worked out, and it should be in this month's pension deposit. The added pension money was included in the May 30th, 2024 deposit. Took a month, two months before we got that part of it straightened out. A more recent issue with our pension, I know, wasn't created by Kevin Javarez. However, the current handling of the monies that have been kept from the current group of retirees is somewhat mind-boggling. The fact that the two separate spreadsheets that were provided to some of the retirees, not everybody got one, were correct. And this is concerning at best, and how now we must wait for another new 1099R forms from US Bank. Several other concerns are the fact that we haven't been told how far back this discrepancy goes, how the money's monetary loss to the retirees was calculated. In other words, there isn't any transparency by the town at any point during the entire ordeal. Questions weren't answered when asked by some of the retirees, and communication, in some cases, was non-existent. We just want what we're, what we're entitled to, no more, no less. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the Board of Selectmen?
Hi, my name's Donald Marr. I live at 29 Mayfield Terrace in Eastline. I've been a member, retired member now, of the Eastline Police Department. I started part-time 1971. I did five years part-time in 1976. I took the test and became a full-time officer. At that time, there was only four officers full-time at the PD. So the PD's come a long way. So I retired from the PD in 2015 at the rank of detective. I was the first detective ever in the town of Eastline. I've been a member of the Niannic Fire Department for 60 years, and I've also been a deputy fire marshal assisting them in fire investigations as part of my job as a police officer. So I have a few questions. I learned about this about three months ago. And I only learned about it is because Debbie Levandowski again told Terry, Terry told me. I'd like to know why nobody from the town of Eastline sent us any letters on this, that this is happening. This is terrible. I also want to say is, I want to know who is doing the figuring for this and how they're, coming out with all these numbers for us, for 20 years it's going to take. I'm 78 years old. I don't have 20 years to wait for the money, and I'm not going to. But also, as Terry touched on, is the 1099Rs we got in the mail the other day from US Bank. Next thing I know, I'm getting an email from Kevin saying, "Don't, don't do your taxes, that figuration's wrong." Now, who's figuring these things and it's wrong? So now my taxes are held up. We're still waiting for another 1099R from US Bank. I, I mean, this is just, this is just unbelievable, this is going on. So, and, and there's other people in this room tonight that never even knew about it till a week ago, when I told Robbie Wilson about it. Not all the retirees know about it. It's like being slid under a rock someplace. This isn't right. This is a mess. And that's all I really got to say. I've been in law enforcement a long time, and if I ever did any investigations like this, you wouldn't be seeing me.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that has a comment this evening? All right.
Do we have people?
What's that?
Reading?
Online?
To talk online?
Oh, is there anyone online? Maybe, is there one?
Are we?
I think there's an issue with online.
Or is there?
Sorry?
I was just saying, it's not in the...
Can we add a?
Oh, it's, it's down here. Discussion of pension tax.
Yeah, that's later on.
Okay, understood. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, that's later on.
I just didn't know. Okay.
Okay. All right, so does anyone else that wants to comment? And then the next is the approval of the minutes in the regular meeting of January 22nd, 2025. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the regular meeting minutes of January 22nd, 2025? January 9th, 2025, okay? It's submitted.
Yep. Okay. Any?
Just a second.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Don. Any corrections or comments on the minutes?
The minutes say January 8th, not January.
That's a typo.
Oh, okay.
The minutes, they'll be...
So the meeting was on?
January 9th.
9th, okay. So we'll just, that should be, we'll correct this. Okay, yes, correcting the motion, and we're just going to correct the copy of the minutes. Good catch.
January 9th was a Thursday?
A Thursday. I don't think that's right.
8th, then it was the 8th, then it was the 9th, that's wrong.
All right, so, okay.
Perhaps amend the motion?
I'm going to re-amend the motion.
Yeah.
Move to approve the regular meeting minutes of January 8th, 2025 is submitted.
Okay, good. Now, do we have a second on the amended? A second again. Okay, great. All right, now we've figured that out. Any comments on the minutes themselves? All right, and then if none, all in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Candace.
Abstain.
Motion carries. And yours, we have one abstention with Roseanne. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar.
Right, move to approve the consent calendar for February 5th, 2025 in the amount of
Okay, do I hear a second?
A second.
We have a second. Any discussion on the consent calendar? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Being none, motion carries. Unanimous. New business, we have discussion of possible action, MOU for the workers' comp for Eastline Waterford Wellsco for January 2025. Do we have any commentary on that?
Do you want me to do the motion?
Yeah, why don't you do the motion?
And then we'll talk. Okay. Move the following. Whereas Wellsco, Waterford, Eastline Shellfish Commission has been notified by the state of Connecticut that workers' compensation insurance is required for its part-time employees. Whereas those part-time employees are also engaged in water and shellfish testing in the Niannic River and its estuaries for the shellfish commissions of Waterford and Eastline. Whereas it would be time-consuming and expensive for either Eastline or Waterford to provide any workers' compensation insurance for these employees of Wellsco. Now therefore, it is agreed through the memorandum of understanding that the towns of Waterford and Eastline will each contribute 1/3 of the workers' compensation insurance premium as reimbursement to Wellsco for its payment of such premium on a twice-a-year basis by payment of invoices submitted by Wellsco. And therefore, this memorandum of understanding is agreed to be continued for the next two calendar years, January 2025 to January 2027. It may be extended in writing by agreement of the parties. Any party to this agreement may elect to terminate the agreement as to its obligations herein set forth within a 90-day written notice to all parties. So agree this 5th day of February 2025.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay. So Wellsco, which is a commission that is, consists of Waterford individuals and Eastline appointees, they have people that work for them, and they require workers' compensation insurance. It's been a problem in the past. It's finally been worked out, and the agreement is that Waterford will pay a third, we pay a third, and then Wellsco itself will pay 1/3 of the fee. So this agreement's already been signed by Robert Bruhl, First Selectman of Waterford. And what we're looking for tonight is my authority to sign it so that we can pay the, our third of the workers' comp insurance. So, any other questions? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Being none. Candace, are you voting on this one?
Yes, I am. I'm an aye.
You're an aye?
Thank you.
Okay, very good. All right, so it's unanimous? And I'll sign the original. Sit around here somewhere. Okay, very good. Thank you. Next on our new business is a discussion of possible action. Park and Rec Special Appropriation, $14,500 for the NIP Bottle Fund, purchase of new trash receptacles. Jerry, were you going to comment on that, or?
Yes, Jerry Locken, Parks and Rec Director, I believe the members of the Board of Selectmen have received a memo in your agenda packet, but essentially, the purchases for downtown, replacement of downtown trash cans, right now, the cans that we have right now are at the end of their life and they need to be replaced. We are proposing to replace them with some trash cans that we've worked together with Niannic Main Street and our Parks Department, choose ones that are aesthetically pleasing, easy to empty, and, you know, we'll just keep the downtown cleaner. The NIP funds, that's the tax that's on the little NIP bottles, goes into, you know, we get an allocation from the state every year to use these funds. These funds have to be used for something kind of related to, you know, the trash or recycling program that, you know, the NIPS contribute to the problem. So downtown, this is a trash-related enterprise, so it's a, an appropriate use of the, of the NIP funds to do. So the NIP funds are a little bit north of $50,000. We're asking for $14,500 to purchase these new trash cans. So I guess with that, I'll answer any, any questions.
So this will replace some of the trash cans that are on Main Street with more attractive trash cans that are easier to empty, presumably?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Easier for the Public Works and Parks and Rec to manage.
Are you just replacing trash cans, or are you getting more too?
Essentially, we're replacing the ones that are down there now, but there may be one or two that go into other locations that, that we've determined that need, you know, additional receptacles just based on what we see down there in terms of trash in the downtown.
Great, yeah, that's good.
My understanding is that the new ones have covers, they're kind of, they're hooded so that the water doesn't get in, and it makes it lighter for the guys that are, women who are raised, it's affecting them.
Right, yes, yep.
So it's certainly better for the people that are taking care of the things. Okay. Any additional comment or questions?
I don't think we need to make a motion.
I'm going to make the motion. All right. No other comments? All right, move to approve a special appropriation of $14,500 from the NIP funds to purchase 15 trash containers and liners for downtown Niannic and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. Note, this will require a town meeting.
Okay. So do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, motion carries unanimously. Next will be Public Works, another special appropriation coming out of the NIP Bottle Fund, and this is for cleaning of the catch basins. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. For the record, Alex Close, Deputy Public Works Director. So the proposed use of the remaining funds, we'd like to use, you have a draft motion there, use it to clean out the sumps of the catch basins, which is a program we do annually. We have 2,526 catch basins across town. We try to get as many as we can out of our operating budget this year. We try to get as many as we can each year out of our operating budget. So if we were to appropriate the remainder of this money, we could get a little more than half of the catch basins covered out of this fund, which is an acceptable use of the funds because you can use the NIP money to stop the NIP litter that's already entered in the environment from making it worse. And so what happens a lot of times is the runoff takes these things, they track them into the catch basins along with all the other sediment. And so we go off of the central region low bid for the catch basin cleaning, which is currently $29 per catch basin. So that's where that figure is coming from. So essentially, we could use this funding to, you know, get as many catch basins as we can to help supplement some of that operating cost, which then we can put towards other, you know, maybe more road resurfacing or more full-depth patchwork. And there's, there's other things we can do with that money, where this fund is very limited in what we can do. So it'd be good, you know, kind of an appropriate use to offset something, a normal function that we'd be doing and let our other funds go a little bit, a little bit further, if that makes sense.
Okay. Great. Okay, so any questions about how this works? This is a device that'll go in and remove the debris that's in the catch basin?
Correct. It's a company that has large vacuum trucks, and they come out. We had the, the company who's still on the bid, we had come out earlier this year, did all the high school, you know, we always do the transfer station, the parking lots, because those are hotspots. And we did a little more than a quarter of the town north of 95. We kind of make our way through town as we can budget-wise. You know, we have kind of a path that we go through town. Like to get to the point where we're doing half the town each year. I think it's going to really help us keep up with the sediment and stop it, you know.
So is this a contractor that does it?
Yes, correct. Yeah, yeah. And currently, that's where that, that money comes from, is that $29, it's right off of the cog bid, the low bidder for them.
Okay. I have the same line of question. All of us are wonderful, that's a good number per catch basin.
Yes.
That's a good price. I mean, we probably couldn't beat that one. But do we not do it any of ourselves, or not?
We don't. We don't have the equipment to do it.
Okay, I thought we did. All right. All right, so do we hear a motion?
Move to approve a special appropriation for the Public Works Department of $38,230.63 from NIP funds for cleaning town catch basins and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. Note, this will require a town meeting.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Roseanne. Any further comments or?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
What is a catch basin?
Sure. So when you see the grate on the side of the road that collects all the stormwater runoff, and, you know, it's a concrete block structure under the ground with the storm pipe that leaves it, and our catch basins are installed with sumps, so the lowest outlet, there's actually like a structure below that to capture the sediment and all the polluted stuff and trash and all that, and that's what we're sucking out. So that stuff settles to the bottom of the catch basin. So you have to regularly be cleaning these things out to stop the sediment from building up so that they get flushed through the storm pipe.
And when you say sediment, that's, that's not a technical term. That's just whatever happens to get washed down this thing, like NIP bottles?
Yeah, there's trash and sediment. Sediment's all like the sand and things that erode off of the earth, and they trap heavy metals and all kinds of different oils from cars and fertilizer and what have you, and they, you know, they bond to these things, and then that's when they settle into the bottom of the basin. There's all kinds of different devices that we can get into a whole separate thing as part of our MS4 permit. But yeah, essentially, the rainwater carries all the trash and all the nasty stuff, goes into that grate, sits in the, in that bottom, and then we got to keep the bottom of that thing clean so that it doesn't build up with too, with too much crud, so it's going to get washed into the waterway. That's why we send the back truck out to go and suck that stuff out.
Crud is also not a technical term.
It's not, but it's a good way to describe all the nasty stuff that's in there, yeah.
My, my concern, I have not sat on a board when we made a decision about this NIP fund, so I'm not entirely sure what strings are attached to it. It did sound to me like there was a little accounting sleight of hand happening, where we're taking some money to do this, so we free up money elsewhere. But it sounds like this would be on the up and up because this is directly going towards cleaning up trash.
Right.
trash in the community, and making sure that we can process our, our water supply.
Right, it's not, we don't, my point is, we don't have a separate account that covers this kind of stuff. What we do is, when we have to do this cleaning process that's required under our MS four permit, we take it out of our operating budget, and that operating budget, we can do for all kinds of stuff. Clean catch basins, we can also do it to be, you know, patching potholes, and doing new pavements and things like that, whereas this NIP fund is very limited in what it can be used for, but, you know, we believe this is a really good use of these funds, because the trash cans are awesome, hopefully, people are throwing that stuff in the trash cans, but we're seeing them all over the side of the road, and then they're going to get washed into the basin, and so, we think maybe that's the net, the trash is the first line of defense, maybe this is kind of the second line of defense, if you will.
It sounds reasonable to me. I would defer to my cohort up here, who maybe has more information on this NIP funds.
Thank you.
So, the fifty-two thousand, it's kind of a windfall for us, so to speak. Hopefully, that number isn't based on East Line residents' usage, the fifty-two thousand, because that's a heck of a lot of NIP bottles. But do you know how it is determined how much each town would receive?
I don't know, actually, from how the NIP fund is derived. I don't know if anyone else on the board knows, or Kevin?
It's, that's how many, I think it's five or ten cents of NIP that is sold in our town.
Sold in East Line.
So, all the liquor stores in the town of East Line report those numbers to the State of Connecticut, and the State of Connecticut remits to us. So, when you're talking, we give about twenty-six, between twenty-five and twenty-six thousand dollars a year in this NIPS funding, I believe it's ten cents a piece, you're talking two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand NIPS in a year? Yeah, that sounds about right, because it's a hundred-and-thirty thousand NIPS in a six-month period.
It's a lot of NIPS. And that's what's turned in.
No, no, they're not turned in. They're not turned in. When you buy a NIP at the store, it's not a refundable deposit.
Gotcha.
And those do accumulate on the side of the road, I know, for many cleanups there.
Yeah.
They accumulate.
I can tell you, unfortunately, yeah, yes, they do.
Yeah.
So.
Yep. So.
Hopefully, the new garbage cans will help too, you know?
Hopefully.
People put them in the garbage can.
Yeah, when they're thrown out of the window, they'll maybe hit the garbage can out of the way.
No, absolutely, I mean, the garbage cans are great, it is the first, it is that first line of defense, if everybody can put their garbage in the garbage cans, that's awesome. But then, for the garbage that doesn't make it in the garbage cans, we're trying to take action on that.
You know, there's a lot on the side of the road, yeah. Definitely see it.
Well, this is, you know, the thing is, we have this money, and there's only certain ways we can spend it, so this is really a legitimate use of the NIP Bottle Fund, because a lot of those bottles end up in those catch basins. They wash into them, and you find a lot of them in there, so it's a legitimate use, so. All right, any other questions about the NIP bottle, cleaning the catch basins? If not, you already, we have, you already, we have a second, right?
Yep.
Okay, so, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Being none, motion carries, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Now, as far as scheduling the public hearing, do we do that tonight, or what, is that part of the?
Board of Finance.
No, it has to go to Board of Finance.
Board of Finance, and then they get scheduled.
Yeah.
Okay, so, all right, so that's the next step. All right, next is appointments to boards and commissions. I think we have someone that wants to be on the Inland-Wetlands Commission.
Move to appoint Carlo Lombardo of Two Hillcrest Road, Niantic, as an alternate member on the Inland-Wetland Agency, with a term to expire on January fifth, twenty-twenty-six.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a second. Any discussion?
Carlo's a good man from a good family.
All right. That's good. All right, that's great. I appreciate his interest, so, if there's any further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Being none, motion carries. Congratulations, Carlo, and thank you for your willingness to serve, and.
One more.
We have Youth and Family Services?
Move to appoint Justin Hannah of Thirty-four Park Place, Niantic, as a member on the Youth, Family and Human Services Commission, with a term to expire on January second, twenty-thirty-four?
All right, yep, do I hear a second?
I'll second Justin.
Okay. Any, any further discussion? All right, being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Being none, motion carries. And was there another, was there an additional?
No, that was it, yeah, the other one is being put over to another.
I see. Okay.
These people still have to go and be sworn in?
They do, yeah.
Correct. Just so they're notified.
Yep. All right. Next is the approval of the departmental.
We don't have any of this.
There are none tonight?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll just go, pass that. Next is appointing Bill Waddes to check the indices and the land records. He's been doing it for many years, and we're fortunate that he's still willing to do that. Do I hear a motion to appoint?
Move to appoint Attorney William Willetts Jr. to examine the indices of the land records for calendar year twenty-twenty-five, in accordance with Connecticut General Statute, section seven dash fourteen, for the sum of two thousand dollars.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a second.
Mr. Willetts has done this for over thirty years, I don't know how, it may be closer to forty, and his rates do definitely do not reflect inflation. This is a bargain.
Well, it is.
What is, what does he do exactly? Does anybody know?
Yes.
He goes.
He refer, he reviews all of the indices, hours of work to review all of these, and he goes through each one diligently.
In the town clerk's vote.
Town clerk's vote.
To make sure, like.
Everything's there.
Everything's there and done accurately. Okay, understood.
All right. So, we have a motion, we have a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Being none, motion carries. All right. So, next is, tonight is the night that we present the budget to the Board of Selectmen. Let's see. Yep, let's see. And so, you've received your budget books in the past, and we've already started the review. The way this process works is Kevin Gervais and myself, we meet with the department heads, and they prepare a budget, and they present it to us, and then we go through their numbers, and we try to find other opportunities to trim the budget. And so, we've already gone through that process, and the next step is for the Board of Selectmen to go through the budget, take another look, and review, and see what adjustments they want to make, and then ultimately, it goes to the Board of Finance for the same process, and then it goes to approval, to the town. So, you know, we're in a, we're in a posture where there's ever-increasing demands for the services of the town, it's, it's difficult to keep up with the pace of inflation, and yet provide the same level of service, and so, it really requires a lot of work and clever thinking on the parts of the various department heads, to find ways, create efficiencies, to provide the same level of service, and yet, find a way to make it palatable for our taxpayers. One of the principles and ideas that we've really tried to advance, particularly this year and beginning of last, last season, is the idea of strategic planning. We've tried to be smarter by planning expenses, capital, capital improvements. We have a capital improvement committee, they'll be submitting their recommendations to us tomorrow night, but rather than waiting till the last minute, and when we're all tired, and having reviewed the operating budget to try to deal with the capital plan, we've really spent a lot of time this year studying those requests. We actually had field trips to some of the various facilities in town, and we went to the Public Works, Parks and Rec took us to the parks, and some of the things that they are responsible for, we went to Capital Drive, to our, the Public Works Building, and we really had, it was very insightful, and it's so much easier to make decisions on the capital plan, once you've seen, and now you know what they're talking about, when the department heads come in and talk about, gee, we need a new sander for the back of the truck, or a new machine for grooming one of the, you know, ball fields. We can see the old one, we can see the one that's fallen apart, and it helps us to prioritize. So, really, a big theme for the budget was strategic planning, and the other theme that's been recurring is, you know, needs versus wants. You already heard some talk about that tonight, but, you know, there's a lot of infrastructure in this town, it requires a lot of work to keep it working properly, the fields, the buildings, air handlers, all the things that require maintenance, and have to be taken care of. So, we're really trying to focus on that, to get the most life and longevity out of what we already have, before we go and take on a new project, another new building, or another new park, something else that's going to require manpower to take care of it. So, those are some of the overriding ideas, and the other is, and we'll talk a little bit about this in a minute, when we actually get into the presentation, that Kevin's going to help me with, is this concept of cash capital versus borrowing, or, or, you know, debt. And we started last year trying to increase the use of cash capital, which means you're paying it out of your operating budget, rather than borrowing money to pay for capital improvements. And the more you can do that, the more, when you start down that road, you know, it starts off small, but now, every year, you're borrowing money, a little bit less, and the costs associated with borrowing that money and bonding starts to diminish. So, eventually, maybe you get to the point where you're paying for more of your capital expenditures with cash, and you're bonding less. So, it's another strategic move. So, these are the ideas we've been working with, and I want to thank everybody that's been involved, particularly all the department heads, I want to thank Kevin, I want to thank the board, you know, wouldn't happen without Kevin's insight and his very deep understanding of how our budget works. So, with that, we'll start, we have a presentation, and the first screen are the budget initiatives. And first and center on that is the fire service. You know, in the last year, we've made some moves, we created the East Line Fire Service, there, you know, were criticisms, criticisms of doing that, but we really needed a strong management structure. We didn't have a chain of command that we needed in, in the fire service. So, that's been established, we have a fire chief, we have a deputy fire chief, we have paid, eleven paid firefighters, and now, we are intending to hire our twelfth paid firefighter. One of the things that we did this past year, one of the, I think, achievements for our administration here, was the, the IAFF contract had been pushed off, it had been extended, and the renegotiation of that contract had been put over, and sort of landed on my, in my lap, but we got it done. We met with, we, we met with the IAFF, we ironed out an agreement that was mutually beneficial, we gave up some things, and they gave up some things, and we came to a meeting of the minds, and we, one of the big features was that we went to this twenty-four forty-eight schedule, which is very advantageous for firefighters. It's really starting to become the standard, that's twenty-four forty-eight, or some areas twenty-four seventy-two, which we can't achieve yet, but we were able to get to the twenty-four forty-eight schedule, which means you work twenty-four hours, then you have two days off, then you work another twenty-four, so you work forty-eight hours in the week. And this allows us to have two firehouses staffed twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, with two firefighters in each of the two, the Niantic Firehouse and the one in Flanders. We want to continue to improve that service, and so, this year, we are going to hire a thirteenth firefighter halfway through the season. The ultimate goal, we talked before about strategic planning, the idea is to ultimately, it's going to take years to do it, but to get to eighteen firefighters, so you have six firefighters per shift, twenty-four-seven, two per station, and we do have that other, we have three stations, we have the one down there, the Lime Tavern, Station.
Station two.
And that's the ultimate goal. So, you've got six people ready to go, twenty-four-seven, and we're going to, we've got, we'll be able to have four on, on deck right now, and that's our goal. The other aspect is increase in cash capital, we just talked about that a little bit, but we want to balance current debt service versus the use of cash. And sort of a simple way is, you know, you're out to dinner, and you have a choice, you can, you have fifty bucks in your pocket, you can, you can pay cash for your meal, or you can put it on the credit card and stretch it out and pay for it over time. The more that we can pay cash for capital expenditures, the less debt will cost us over time, we already talked about that. Last year, we did nine hundred and two thousand, this year, we're trying to increase that to one point three-five million this year, that means using money out of the operating budget from efficiencies and savings and other areas, to use that to buy capital things that we need, instead of just borrowing that money and having to pay the interest on it over many, many years. So, the goal is to try to get to using two million in cash capital annually, so we are making progress. The other emphasis is, as I said before, maintaining our buildings, our vehicles, and prioritizing wants versus needs. With that, I'm going to turn to some of the numbers, and I'm going to ask Kevin to talk about the numbers, because he is conversant on that more so than myself.
All right, thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Kevin.
So, what we have here, all the, the selectmen in front of, in front of me here, you have the budget books, and Candace, I have your budget book right here next to me, so next time you're in town, come and grab it. But, for anyone at home, anyone behind me, anyone listening, if you go to ELtownhall.com, and you go either to the Board of Finance or the Finance page, go to Budget Information, all our information is uploaded, everything in these books is uploaded to the town's website. If anyone has any questions, send me an email, or stop in, and I'll be happy to answer anyone's questions on any of these, with the exception of the Board of Ed. So, with the exception of the Board of Ed. So, Town Operations, Debt Service, and then the Capital Line, come and see me. All right, so, this, this front screen here is just a summary of our expenditures and our revenues. As you can see, we're, we're, the Town Operations is up about twelve percent, Board of Ed's coming just shy of seven, our Debt Service increased by four hundred and sixty thousand, so that's up about seven percent, and then Cash Capital going from nine hundred thousand to the one point three-five million, and if everyone remembers, last year, our Cash Capital was less than five hundred thousand dollars. When you look at other towns, and you compare ourselves, and kind of benchmark us, one town I really like to kind of compare ourselves to, to see how we're doing performance-wise, is the town of Madison. Madison pays the majority of their capital projects in cash. You can see, we're heavy on debt, we're paying seven point two million dollars towards our Debt Service, our Cash Capital is one point three million. In, in other municipalities, that's reversed, and that's the trend we need to get to. We should be decreasing our Debt Service load and increasing our Cash Capital. Cash Capital doesn't come with interest, it doesn't come with bond counsel, bond advisory fees, things like that, so it's advantageous for us to start ramping up this Cash Capital, probably to a two, two and a half million dollar range, and then only bonding for larger projects, you know, renovating schools, fire stations, things like that, large multimillion-dollar projects, anything, you know, anything south of like a hundred thousand dollars is a good range roughly, that should be paid for in cash, you know, most of the time. Right now, a lot of those projects are being bonded, right? So, we need to get away out of this, this downward bonding cycle. The town has over seventy million dollars in debt, and, you know, we've heard, you know, through, you know, from the Board of Ed, they have a vision committee to talk about a new high school, so, before we touch a high school, or any of these other, you know, big projects, or the community center, we already have seventy million dollars of debt before we attack, you know, seventeen million dollar community center, or whatever the costs to renovate some of these, you know, the high school, things like that. So, just getting into our numbers, the revenue, we're about ninety-eight point four-six million dollars. There is going to be one change, the next time we have a budget meeting, it came through earlier tonight, Governor. Governor Lamont's budget did cut roughly $300,000 from our education cost sharing grant. That is not represented in these numbers, right? So, I have an email out to Nick Menepace. He responded, I haven't read it yet. So, Dan and I will be in conversations with him probably tomorrow to discuss how we can get that funding back. So, stay tuned for that one. Going through the revenues, building permits. Dave Garside, our Chief Building Official, really prides himself on increasing his, the permit fees and just, you know, all the construction in town. So, this upcoming year, we're anticipating an increase to $850,000. I'm sorry, I believe it's 750 now. It's going up to $900,000 in building permit fees throughout town. Recycling and tipping fees from Public Works, that's increased significantly as well. Tuition revenue for Salem and some other individuals outside of town that pay towards our high school, that's increased roughly $300,000 this past year. Currently, we're at 2.6 million. It's going to go just shy of $3 million. Talking about reductions in revenue, the youth service grant, we have moved out of the general fund, and we're moving that over to the grant fund. So, that way, it doesn't have to be spent in this year, and it can be, you know, better tracked and spent in the fund that has that purpose. Other reductions, other financing sources. With the adoption of the new agreement with Eastline Ambulance, we're anticipating $180,000 of reimbursements being cut. You know, the old contract was that the Eastline Ambulance reimbursed the town for the two junior firefighters that worked the night shift. In the new agreement, you know, staffing's kind of been differentiated between that not-for-profit and town employees. We're not, I'm not proposing any operating transfers from other funds as we did in years past. And I'm not proposing any use of bond premiums or bond proceeds in this budget as well. Another thing we have to revisit as the federal, as the Fed, the Federal Reserve, drops its interest rate, that has a direct impact on our investment earnings. We invest in the state of Connecticut. It's the Short Term Investment Fund from the state of Connecticut, otherwise known as STIF. So, right now, I think it's just shy of 5%. But as the federal government cuts that, or the Federal Reserve cuts that interest rate, that has a direct, almost one-for-one correlation to our interest rate that we get at the state level. And that really impacts the $1.2 million we're anticipating getting for investment earnings. So, that's just something to keep in mind as we move forward. On the operating side of things, the general government is up about 18%. And that is largely driven by two factors. Our pension contribution went from 650,000 to an estimated 1 to 1.1 million. Health insurance is also increasing an estimated 11%. And then if you add the one and a half full-time equivalent of firefighters in the budget, that equates to about a million, 1.1 million, I believe, increase between the healthcare and the pension line, just those two. We'll get into the numbers in a little bit. Public Works is relatively flat, about 1%. But keep in mind, that is before the up-to-contract negotiations are settled. So, there's $1.5 million in union salaries in that line. Culture and Recreation, that's Park and Rec, the Commission on Aging, Youth Family Services, and the Library, that's up about 5.5%. Education, as we discussed, is about 7%. The Debt Service that the town has right now is about 6.8% increased. And then Cash Capital is 49%. When we talk about what is driving the increase, these are the departments that are really driving the increase to the town operating budget, right? So, there's four sections of the budget to look at. Town Operations, Board of Ed, Debt Service, and Cash Capital. This is the first line. That's really what we focus all of the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance budget meetings on. So, most of it, you know, 39% of it, is the general government and benefits. That also includes the towns, anything that's not in a department. So, these are all our legal bills. This is all the liability auto protection, workers' comp, FICA Medicare. Everything that's not in an individual department, that's kind of the encompassing, that's the, you know, department, so to speak, of all of that. The other larger increase is the Eastline Fire Service. Those firefighters come at a cost, those additional firefighters. And the other thing with the Eastline Fire is the hydrants have moved out of building maintenance over to the Eastline Fire Service budget. It's, there's a, you know, a gentleman's agreement, if you'd say, or an agreement between the Water and Sewer Commission and the Town of Eastline to increase the hydrant fees 10% a year to bring it back to where it was before it was cut about over a decade ago. You know, there's some individuals on the Water and Sewer Commission that are very first in that. There was a cut done over a decade ago, I think, and it's never recovered to the level it was. So, we're kind of escalating that until we get to that level. The Police Department, a large driver of that increase is holiday pay that police officers are entitled to in their, in their contract that has never really been, not that I could say has ever been actually recorded or budgeted for. Chief Maisick and I ran the numbers. It's $140,000 to pay out the police officers for holiday pay. That's never been budgeted. So, this budget accounts for that, but it does not have any additional police officers in that budget. So, the only two individuals added to our budget, two benefits, are the 1.5 full-time equivalent firefighters. So, when we talk about what departments are really driving this budget, these 10, roughly 10 departments, make up 2.7 million of the 2.77 million dollar increase. These departments make up 98% of the overall increase to the budget. So, what's driving, oh, oh. So, what's driving the increase of the town operating budget? As previously mentioned, health insurance is estimated to go up 11%, just like people at their house. Electric costs affect the town as well. The electricity is estimated to go up by $100,000 just on the town side. I'm sure the Board of Ed, which uses much, much more electric, is probably a quarter of a million dollars. So, the public benefit charge affects the town just as much as it affects, you know, mom and pop taxpayer. Increased pension contribution. This current year, it was just shy of $700,000. And this budget, estimating between 1 and 1.1 million. Increased software costs. We're implementing ADP. Axon BodyCam more than doubled in price. Microsoft continues to increase their price. And so, just throughout these different departments, especially in IT, it's, the software costs are really straining some of these budget lines. The hiring of the 1.5 full-time equivalent firefighters. And then just generally, the inflationary pressures that continue to plague the operating budget. I ran the numbers. I think since 2020, cumulatively, I believe the inflation rate, last I looked, was 22%. It was a little over 22%. So, some of those, you know, one of those years was at 8%. I think it was 21 or 22, it was 8%. So, the town's never had a budget go up that high. So, you know, unless we're cutting service somewhere or finding synergies and efficiencies, eventually, you know, that, that number, that inflation number creeps up on us. All right. So, I just wanted to touch base real quick on our grand list. A lot of, you know, a lot of municipalities across Connecticut this year have experienced a negative grand list growth. Reason being, there's a few state laws that passed, one of them being a veteran, a disabled veterans exemption from paying property taxes. And also, a change, a few changes in motor vehicle. So, you can see motor vehicle is down 11 and a half percent. That's driven by all, I think it's all trailers are no longer taxable. And then the depreciation we, the state uses for vehicles is now more on a straight-line path. They changed it a little bit. Now, it's MSRP instead of what the vehicle is worth. So, that reduced, that caused a $23.5 million adjustment to our motor vehicle line. So, overall, though, just so I can give Diane Vettaglin or our town assessor a shout-out, our grand list was raised 0.03%. I just found out today, for example, Waterford was down over 4% on their entire grand list. Why does this matter? Why are we talking about this? The grand list determines how the mil rate is calculated, right? So, the first number there, you see 2,815,168. If that number, if we were able to grow the grand list by more than that 0.03%, the mil rate would essentially fall because the tax base has grown, right? So, while the tax base did grow, the tax base grew so small, I hope Diane's not listening. The tax base grows too, grew so insignificant, it didn't touch one basis point of the mil, mil rate. So, but it was still positive. Like I said, Waterford is in a little worse situation with their mil rate. So, we're happy it was, it was positive, albeit as small as it was. So, what is this budget in total, between Board of Ed, Town, Debt, and Cash Capital? What does this have on the impact of our taxpayers in town here? If your house is worth $500,000, it is assessed at 70% value with roughly $350,000. Currently, you pay $9,200 in taxes. In this proposal, if everything is passed, like it is right now, it's roughly $10,250 or a $1,000 increase a year, $80 a month. All right? So... You know, it's, I just present, you know, I present the numbers, so. Okay. So, the cost drivers. What is driving this increase? We're talking about a 7, 7,871,000 increase. The Board of Ed makes up just shy of 4.2 million, or 53% of the overall increase. Debt Service makes up 6%. Cash Capital makes up 6%. The Town Operations makes up 35%. As we just showed a few slides ago, 1 mil is essentially 2.8 million. On the town side, Town Operations, we're at 2.7 million. So, we're at 0.95 mil increase. The Debt Service and Cash Capital are under a quarter, and the Board of Ed's about a mil and a half. All right. So, how does the budget break down, not as an increase, but as a whole? So, of the town's 98 million budget, 65% of that is for Board of Ed costs. 26% is for Town Operations. 2% is Cash Capital. 7% is Debt Service. Reason I show this, I'd like to see in the next couple of years the yellow bar expanding and the Debt Service shrinking. So, that's really what, you know, one of our major goals of the budget in long-term is to increase that Cash Capital and shrink that Debt Service. So, we want to touch upon capital projects. The CIP meeting, we have one or two more meetings to go before they recommend a package to the Board of Selectmen. Currently, we are facing 26.6 million of capital projects requests. But, before, you know, we talk about that number, $17 million of that number is one capital project. That is the Eastline Community Center expansion slash renovation project. So, if you, if you just take that out, just to look at the numbers, we're about $9.5 million of capital projects. That's down significantly from what we even approved last year. We approved over $10 million of capital projects. So, last year was, was kind of high in capital projects. This year is higher, but it really, it's that one project that's kind of throwing the, it's skewing the numbers a little bit. And then last slide, the tenure capital plan. We have not discussed that in the CIP Working Group Committee yet. We're hoping to get that out tomorrow pending the snowstorm. We'll see what happens. But in the next couple of meetings here, we'll, we'll be able to present that to the Board of Selectmen. If anyone has any questions, like I previously mentioned, this, this presentation will be on the town website. It might already be there. But this link will take you right to the Finance page or the Board of Selectmen page. They all link to the same page. All of the department's budgets are on there, as well as the operating summary, expenditures, revenues. And after tomorrow, we'll have the capital project budget on there as well.
Great.
All right.
Any, any questions? We're going to be looking at this a lot over the next few weeks.
Can I ask like an overarching question?
Yeah.
So, sorry, I can't, I have to switch my glasses. So, just in terms of the math, from my understanding, if a Board of Ed has a 50% increase, but it represents roughly 66, 2/3% of the overall budget, does that mean that they are growing by a slower rate than the rest of the town in terms of...
In this particular year, the Town Operations budget is growing faster than the Board of Ed's budget.
Which is why they represent 50% increase instead of like a 66.
Correct. Correct. Yeah. If all departments are growing at the same, those two, those two slides of the graph sort of matched.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
In the presentation, you mentioned the added cost or the shown cost for the holiday spending because that was never budgeted.
Correct.
Where did that money come from?
So, sometimes if we had a, from what I've looked at, the retirement liability line was a lot of times used. The personal contingency was used sometimes. And then if there was leftover money in the health insurance line, that was used. It looked like it was kind of a, depending on the year and what line was running under budget, that's where it was put.
Okay. If we're going to have to begin considering cuts on the Cash Capital plan that you would like to see enacted, what would be the impact of dropping that, decreasing the amount that's planned?
The Cash Capital?
Right. Now, I know that if I can't, if I can't use cash to pay my bills, I have to use credit card.
Yep.
Then I understand about the credit card debt, but I also have to pay my bills.
Let me just pull this up here.
So, I can't add to my savings account.
Correct. So, we're kind of in, let me just pull this up so I can talk about it. The town's kind of in a little bit of a, I won't say spiral, but it's a negative feedback loop. Every year, we take out millions of dollars of debt. So, currently, right now, we have, I'm going to show you right here. We have, you know, a pretty substantial debt burden. If everyone can see this here on the screen, let me just zoom in. So, down here in the red is the Town of Eastline. This was a budget from, I presented this last year. I haven't updated the numbers yet, but it still holds true for the most part. So, the town's operating budget was $86 million. The Board of Ed represented 67% of that. Town Operations was 25%. Debt Service was 7 and 1/4%. Cash Capital was less than 1%. What is, what is our peers, these towns I compare ourselves to, what are they doing? On average, the Board of Ed is about 60, 59 and 1/2%. Town Operations is about 30%. Debt Service is about 6%. Cash Capital's at 3 and 1/2%. The town I like to compare ourselves to, I know it's a little, it's a higher dirk than us. It's a little bigger, but I think they do a pretty good job of budgeting. You can see Board of Ed's right around, very similar to us. The Town Operations is very similar to us. But look at their Debt Service and their Cash Capital compared to ours. It's inversely, it's inverse, right? They pay $5.5 million of Cash Capital, and their debt payments are less than $2 million. You go down to us, we're at $6 million of debt, and we have 500,000 of Cash Capital in this particular year. The following year, the year we're in right now, we're still about $6.5 million of debt, and we increased our Cash Capital to 900,000. If you don't increase your Cash Capital, you're just feeding that debt and increasing that number, right? So, currently, we have a bond anticipation note, which is a one-year short-term financing note for $19 million. That's got to get bonded in the next couple of years. Probably a little over the next three years, it'll be drawn down. But $19 million, even over a 20-year loan, is a million dollars in principal itself and probably closer to a million dollars in interest, at least probably 800,000 in interest. So, that's got to be financed. So, that number of 6.5, bonds are rolling off as well, so we have to take that into account. So, it's not a one-for-one. We're just going to throw it onto the Debt Service schedule. But a large portion of that is going to inflate this Debt Service. This year coming up, we're going to do the same thing, right? So, the Capital Improvement Committee is meeting. There's 26 and 1/2 million of capital projects. You know, we put a budget together of 1.3 million of Cash Capital against a proposed budget of 26 and 1/2 million. If that all gets approved, the town is going to bond this next year 25, help me out, Jason. 25 million bucks roughly, 25.3 million, right? So, the following, next year happens again. We bond more projects, and we're feeding, you know, this, this negative feedback loop. We've got to break it at some point. So, the last couple of years, we went from half a million dollars of Cash Capital. This current year, we're at 900,000. This next year coming up, the year we're talking about right now, it should be about 1.5. But just due to the other factors we're facing, I don't think we could get quite to that 1.5 number without having to realize some more cuts in some other, some other areas of the budget, right? Did that kind of answer your question there in a roundabout way?
I'm thinking about it.
Okay.
Go ahead. No, you go ahead.
Well, I'm pushing numbers around here very cursory. I know you've done probably more sophisticated breakdowns. But I noticed that going from 920,000 to 1.35 million is roughly a 1.48% increase. And then going from 1.35 million to 2 million also is a 1.458 increase. And then 2 to 2.5 million would be a 1.25 increase. So, those are just kind of the numbers that I heard thrown out in terms of a long, long-range plan. And I think kind of what Rose had to say, I don't want to put words in her mouth or paraphrase, but if we change that overall percentage, we could still reach the 2.5 million target over the course of the same timeline, but soften the blow and perhaps free up revenue to do other things if we just changed it by, say, instead of 1.48 increase, just do a 1.4 increase, percent increase. Does any of that make sense to anyone here?
Not going to lie, Jason. Not going to lie, Jason, you lost me a little bit. Okay, but so what I'll do is I'll show you my work paper real quick, so maybe, can you switch it?
Are you saying you want to put less in cash capital?
Yes.
But just a tad less?
Yes, I'm a hundred.
To, to, in other words, to free up some other money is what you're saying?
Yes, and you would still achieve
What?
Two point, two point five million in four years if we reduced it by point eight hundredths, eight hundredths of a percent. I don't know if the math checks out, but it does make sense up here.
So you want to know then what that eight hundredths of a percent equals in, in actual dollars?
Year one to year two of this plan, as was presented to us, it goes up by about one and a half. Year one, or year two to year three, one and a half. Year three, year four, it goes up by one point two five. So there's a little discrepancy at the tail end there trying to get to that two point five goal. Could we perhaps expand them all so they're a little bit more equal?
Can we talk afterwards about this?
Yeah. Let's do it. Let's do that. I got.
I, I, you know, I need a math refresher, so.
Yeah, so my simple, my simple point was that this is an ideal plan, and I like the plan. But thinking of an individual in our town who's going to be facing added costs to things that they have to have, they can't put money aside in the savings, which would save money for them in the long run. But they have to, they're going to have to face what, the next couple of years, but we're seeing some pretty significant costs in food, groceries. I was at the grocery store this week, and something that I wanted that was in a package of twelve, in two weeks, it increased by almost three dollars. So this is going to be a big problem, and I, I understand the concept. But if you think about the individual family, you've got to pay your existing bills. And therefore, you can't build up your savings account. And so maybe we have, maybe this is an ideal, but maybe we have to think about that cash capital coming out a little less.
You know, that's the, the words prerogative. I would just say of, of the seven point eight million dollar increase across the town, that cash capital increase represents five percent. So just wanted to say my piece on my project there.
If I may comment on that. So one of the other major themes of, of, of our administration is we've been solving problems, problems that we really didn't anticipate. Couldn't have known some of them. One is the issue we'll be talking about in a few minutes, this, this pension issue problem that we discovered. The other is this, on the police budget for the, the, it was the holiday pay. And, you know, that's been out there. Kevin figured it out and covered it, and now we are addressing it. And that's kind of, that's really what we've been doing a lot of for the past several months, finding problems and trying to solve those problems. One of the problems is that we really haven't managed cash in a way that we could have. One of the things Kevin did a year ago was he, he started investing some of the, the money and getting much greater interest on the money we had.
All of our money.
All of our money.
We invest almost every dollar, every day.
And we weren't doing that before, and that's, that was a huge thing. The other thing is this concept of trying to expand the use of cash capital. If we're ever going to get to where we need to be and, and make it easier for people to go out and buy the groceries and, and reduce some of the financial pressure, we have to, we have to do the hard thing now, the difficult thing, but the smart thing. And it's incumbent upon us to apply these principles for the better, betterment of everybody in town here to, to look long-term, not short-term, to look long-term so that we get into a much better, down-the-road financial and fiscal posture. So I hope that we'll have support for that as we move through the budget. That's what I wanted to say about that. Oh, one other piece, you know, there was a, an element here where it showed a reduction in revenue of a hundred and eighty thousand from, that we were receiving from the ambulance service. One of the other things that we did this year, I've been blessed of renew, renegotiating lots of contracts, and one of them was the Eastline Ambulance Fund. And we just recently renegotiated an agreement with them. And in the past, they were paying us, what was it, two hundred, someone?
About two hundred forty thousand.
About two hundred forty thousand. And, you know, the idea that we came up with was, look, we want you to run your business. You get paid for driving the ambulance and, from the insurance companies, and you keep all the money. But you, you fund everything you need to run your ambulance service. And so we made that change. It was a fundamental and, and a big change. And that new agreement started four days ago. And I hope that, you know, they're successful in it. And I think it's going to, you know, serve both the ambulance service and the town long-term. That we're not providing bodies to drive their ambulances, and they're not paying us money for our people. And so they can run their business the way they want, and we can focus on our firefighters being available to fight fires. So that's why we saw that amount drop, that hundred and eighty thousand. So they will get to keep that money and hopefully be able to run efficiently and profitably. That's all I'll say about that. Any other comments this evening before we move on? Kevin, I want to thank you very much. You know, this wouldn't have happened with all your insight and, and your, you know, calling me at eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock at night so we could talk about some of these elements on the budget. But I appreciate all of that, and hopefully we move this process forward. Thank you very much. All right. So next is the discussion of the pension tax payroll issue. And I know, I think we have some, we have some
Yes, so.
On the line. I just want to say before we start, you know, I know there were some concerns tonight and, and people aren't happy with the situation. Again, this was another aspect of uncovering a problem that's been out there. And it was Kevin's staff and Kevin that brought this to my attention, and it was brought to Kevin's attention. And we've been working, and particularly Kevin has been working very hard with professionals. We've hired lawyers to specialize in this, actuaries. It, it, there is no, this isn't your normal problem. There's no playbook to solve this problem. So we've had to kind of figure it out from, from scratch in many ways. And, you know, Kevin has worked very hard. There've been multiple meetings with these various professionals to try to get the resolution here. And I hope everyone appreciates the hard work that's gone into this, even if you don't feel right now that you're happy or satisfied with a lot of hard work and a good-faith attempt to, to do the right thing is what's happened. So I want you all to know that. And Kevin, oh, that's it. I'll let you carry, carry on the discussion.
All right, so in our Zoom call, we have Virginia McGarrett, our pension attorney, as well as David Woodman-C, our actuary. So what I have here on the screen is a letter composed from our town's actuary, reviewed by our pension attorney to present here tonight to the board and to the individuals behind me here and just explain what's happened with the pension, where are we at, and, and why this is still a topic for discussion, right? So about a year ago, you know, this issue was uncovered where police officers and firefighters were paying their pension contributions on a post-tax basis as dictated by our pension plan at the time. Our pension plan has since been restated as of January seventh, twenty twenty-five to now say it is pre-tax contributions to make us more in line with best practices. Okay, so this issue here, Mr. Woodman-C really lays it out nice of what happened and the solution and, and what the solution is to remedy this, this problem, right? Okay. So without reading off of this, the IRS requires the plan to use a simple, the simplified method to calculate participants' previously taxed contributions in order to prevent from taxing them twice. Okay? So, hold on here, taxable versus non-taxable. So under the simplified method, the plan would use the IRS tables shown on the second page of this document to determine the number of pension payments their participants could expect to receive from the annuity start dates, right? So if an individual, going through this paper here, let me just scroll down here. So if an individual is not more than fifty-five years of age, it is, their non-taxable portion of their pension will be allotted, for a better word, over the three hundred and sixty payments that the IRS tells us we have to use to spread that non-taxable, the, the contributions they've paid in, right? So say fi, say police officer A, there's an example here, actually. So a police officer, a, a participant has elected a fifty percent joint and survivor, and they've paid in forty-two thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars in previously taxed contributions. The combined age, that's a key here. So if there's a police officer or firefighter that has a joint survivor benefit, it is not just the age of that individual, but in the age, the combined age of that individual plus their survivor, okay?
At the time that they retire, is that what you're looking at?
Well, at this point, since.
Am I wrong?
Well.
It says annuity starting.
Look at the example.
We just go forward, and I'll, we'll figure it out.
It does say from annuity starting date here.
Okay, from the annuity start date.
Okay.
Okay, so, so for this, for the example here, forty-two thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars was previously taxed contributions. The joint and survivor combined age is thirty, a hundred and thirty-three years. So if we look at that chart, you can see a hundred and thirty-three falls between, on the right side here, falls between one hundred and thirty-one and one hundred and forty years.
Two hundred and sixty payments.
Two hundred and sixty, what's it say here?
Two hundred and sixty.
Right.
It says two sixty.
Right?
Yeah, I was like.
Okay, did I say two forty or something?
No, I was agreeing with you.
Oh, okay. All right, you scared me there. All right, so you take the, the previously taxed amount, and you are now, you know, spreading that over the amount of payments dictated by the IRS. This isn't something that was, I didn't calculate this. This is, our actuary calculated this using the IRS guidelines for this under the simplified method, okay? So I, I know there's some comments. I did not do these calculations. A certified actuary did these calculations using IRS guidelines in conjunction with discussing this with our pension attorneys, okay? So you'll see here, over those two hundred and sixty payments, that was a hundred and sixty-five dollars that should have been excluded from federal income tax monthly. All right. Well, that same individual, say they retired in twenty fifteen, we've adjusted this. Well, there's been a hundred and three months that have gone by that that individual did not have that, you know, quote-unquote, benefit of getting the non-taxable piece. So what's the remedy for this? That forty-two thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars will now be deducted over the remaining life, or I don't want to say life, but remaining payments, okay, based on this table. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So, and it explains this right here. So this isn't, you know, the, the, the number of months for these individuals for the non-taxable versus taxable piece is dictated by the IRS simplified method, all right? So does anyone have any questions?
Could you say that again?
IRS simplified method.
No, leading up to that.
Which piece?
Just from this past, past four or five sentences that you said.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll just kind of show it here so everyone has a, if people at home can get a screenshot of it. So initially, the, the joint and survivor example here would have had two hundred and sixty payments, right? When they were initially retired, based on the age of the joint and the survivor. Together, that's a hundred and thirty-three years. That falls in that bracket between one thirty-one and one forty. So we're saying, okay, two hundred and sixty payments. So the day that person retired, in this example, that person retired July, June first, twenty fifteen, okay? So now we've identified the issue. We went back and corrected it as of Jan. one, twenty twenty-four, okay? And I know we're restating the ten ninety-nines. But, so Jan. one, twenty twenty-four, that's when the, we remedied the situation going forward. So for this particular example, June one, twenty fifteen through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three was a hundred and three months, okay? You have to back out those hundred and three months from the two sixty. That leaves a hundred and fifty-seven months left, right? Because the, the, does that make sense now?
Yeah, I got it.
Right? So that's where, you know, the non-taxable amount, the forty-two thousand, is still the same amount. It is now just being spread over a shorter term, right? So now, and, you know, the previous example, if this was right from the get-go in twenty fifteen, the individuals would have had a non-tax, a exemption of federal income tax of a hundred and sixty-five dollars. The same individual, since we caught it a hundred and three payments late, later, is two hundred and seventy-three dollars now of a payment exempt, excluded from federal income tax. Does that make sense to the board?
Yeah.
So.
That's the answer.
That's what I got. And just switch screens real quick and just make sure Virginia and Dave don't want to add anything. Virginia and David, are you guys, did I, did I do a good job explaining that?
Yes, 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 you did, Kevin. I, I just did want to add one thing that I, I understand that there's some frustration with this. But please understand that, as, as Kevin explained, the two hundred and sixty months in the example is, and I urge everybody, it's freely available on the IRS website. It's IRS Publication Number Five Seventy-Five. It's freely available. There is no choice or option on this. It is required by the IRS. And I want to, I want to just specify that we're talking two different things here. One is the participant receiving their contributions with interest. The other is how that's taxed, okay? So this is the IRS, they want their tax money upfront. They don't want you to get non, they, they don't want you to get all that non-taxable benefit upfront. They want their tax money. So you, when you, when a, when a retiree receives their pension, it's a first dollar out coming off of their contributions with interest. So effectively, the retiree is paying for the first two to four years of their pension. After that, the plan is paying it, okay? Separately, the IRS says, but you can't do the taxing that way. You have, this is how you have to do the taxation. So for, for the, the issue arose, we discovered it. And rather than going back, because the best we could have done was go back three years, because you can't restate your taxes going all the way back to, in this example, twenty fifteen. So rather than having the participants have to amend any taxes at all, we felt it was best to come up with this methodology, which still leaves the participant in exactly the same situation they were already in. That's the key, is because that ending date matters. So if the retiree were to survive past the two hundred and sixty months, all of their benefits can be fully taxed starting in month two sixty-one. The non-taxable piece ends at that point, and it continues fully taxable after. Okay? I just want to make sure that everybody understands that.
I missed it, so, thank you.
Roseanne, did you understand what he was saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, what I'm saying is I missed it the first time around.
Okay, got you, got you, got you. I just want to make sure everyone understands.
Takes a few times.
Thank you, David.
Okay.
All right. Are there, do we have any questions?
I think there's some over there, but if not.
Todd, do you have any questions?
No, I think I got it.
Candace, any questions on this?
I have no questions on this, no. I mean, it's, it's definitely a gnarly situation, and I'm hoping that anyone that's been affected is going to be allotted their money back, right? But what happens to the people that are, I, I guess are not within the timeframe? Like, what happens to those people that have been affected by this for decades? If you don't mind me asking?
So Kevin, I'll, I'll step in if you, if you want me to.
Thank you.
All right, just to set the history here, I've been the old actuary for the pen, for the town and its pension plan since two thousand sixteen. Shortly before that time, the Hartford sold its
Shortly before that time, the Hartford sold its Retirement Services Division to the, to Mass Mutual back in 2013. At that point in time, prior to that timeframe, the town was purchasing annuities every time somebody retired, rather than having the plan itself pay the ongoing annuities. So, so, and then starting, once the Hartford sold that, their business to Mass Mutual, when Mass Mutual took it over, that stopped because the contract wasn't available under Mass Mutual. Mass Mutual rewrote and came up with a different contract. At that point in time, the plan started paying the monthly benefits itself rather than purchasing an annuity. So the population that we're looking at at this point in time, at first, the first go-through is just the people who've retired that the town is currently paying. The next step is to go through, and I believe that there are four individuals who are receiving an annuity that was purchased. That information, Kevin and I are working to get the contribution information we need, I'm sorry. I heard somebody talking, I'm sorry.
No, it's just, just a cellphone going off, you're fine.
Okay. There, there are four people currently receiving an annuity that were purchased from, as I understand it, Kevin and I are working to gather the information we need in order to calculate that for them. It's back, it's Kevin having to go back into the town's records and find the contribution information because it was never provided to us as the benefit calculators.
Okay, so I think I do have a question. So there were some people who stood up today and they said, oh, I just learned about this last week. So even if people weren't aware of this, is this change being made for?
So the, the change has been made through, so one of the comments was the 1099 being reissued. So we had a meeting January 6th with the 13 individuals identified in the pension plan, okay? To, to, to go over the, that, that monthly, the months, right? That's really the crux of a lot of this, is the, the months. There's disagreement in the number of months, anyway, so that's, it's really about the months. So we went back into US, with US Bank to January 1, 2024, and fixed the taxable versus non-taxable issue. And so we actually had two iterations, we, we sent them the first version, they made the changes, we sent them the second version, they never made the slight adjustments from that first version to the second version. So they, when they submitted the 1099s to the individuals, it wasn't the same amount, it was off a couple, you know, a couple hundred dollars kind of thing. So we've already emailed US Bank, they're working on, they have a 10 business day turnaround for restated 1099s. So the problem is fixed as of Jan. 1, 24. We were able to catch it and, you know, fix it before the 1099s went out, we thought we did, but, so we're going to have to reissue for the 13 individuals, the 1099 are from US Bank. The second issue is those four individuals that have retired, like in the 2005 timeframe, our records really, I was able to get about two years for some of those individuals, but my records go back to about 2005, 2006. Some of these individuals, like you've heard earlier, 1971. So it's, you know, we've sent, we've, we've scrubbed their, we went through their personnel files to find what we could from information, we sent that over to the actuary, and we're working on seeing what we can kind of reverse calculate for these individuals based on the information we have. So there's two pockets of individuals, really, well, there's three. There's also some retired police officers that have not collected their pensions yet, they're fine, because when, when they actually submit to get the retirement calculations, we have their contribution amounts, so, so they'll be fine going forward. The issue's fine going forward, it's just the, there's, there's two issues, really. The, the big discrepancy or agreement, I guess, was about the months, and then really, it's these four individuals and the annuity, and how to handle that, because the information's, we're, we're just trying to, you know, kind of forensically put it together.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Don, any, any questions?
Only thing is to clarify, the months cannot be changed.
That's, this is IRS, from the IRS.
By the IRS.
Just wanted to hear that.
Thank you.
Jason, anyone else? All right. I think we're, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, David, thank you, Virginia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's, when you have something that's a unique situation, you've really got to come up with a solution from scratch, it's not always easy. Thank you for all your hard work, Kevin. And your team. All right, old business, do we have any ex officio reports tonight?
I have some stuff.
Okay.
I know it's been a long series of meetings, but I think the commission would be interested in hearing an update from the Fair and Rent Commission.
Yes, we would.
So January 16th, the first meeting of the Fair and Rent Commission ended up being a training session for commissioners to kind of understand their responsibilities and the full extent of the law. January 29th was their first hearing, at which time they heard a number of cases, and, you know, each one is slightly different, but some of them are argued together, some of them are separate. Then on the 4th, they had deliberations. I was not at the deliberations, but I followed it on YouTube, and I have to say, I'm just really impressed with how much work these people did and how much thought and effort went into it. And they issued a number of decisions which are going to be typed up by town staff and sent out to the parties involved. And I mean, for such a great, big undertaking with just, you know, laypeople, with a little guidance from town council, they really did a great job, and they, they should be proud, their community should be proud of them, and I, I expect to see a lot more good work come out of this commission. That being said, the other stuff that's going on is more fun stuff. The Brookside Farm Museum is having a fundraiser at five churches on February 15th, so after your Valentine's Day, you could go out and support the, your second love, the Brookside Farm Museum. And this Friday, the Stars to Stem Planetarium is doing a rock and roll show up at the planetarium at 7:00 to 9:00, $10 to get into that. I don't know how much the Brookside Farm Museum fundraiser is, I think it might be 20 bucks. Oh, yeah, one other thing. Between our meetings, I went up to Rosa Negra to see my wife and her friends, and Rosa Negra was on TV while I was in Rosa Negra, and I was watching a program on Channel 3 celebrating the unique cultural and dining experience that they offer, and they're being celebrated in a pretty large, lengthy segment, and I was, I was very impressed, it was great. So just wanted to put that out there, go Rosa Negra.
Thank you. Anne?
I don't have anything to report, but just regarding, following up on the Fair and Rent Commission, I just want to give a shout out to Dan for, you know, putting that ordinance together, seeing that there was a need in the town, and, and doing that. And I'm glad that it was put together and that the commission is functioning well.
Thank you, Anne. Don?
I don't think I have an report, we already discussed at times the Wellesco meeting regarding the workers' comp, and that was resolved amicably, and we're all set there.
Candace, anything for us tonight?
No, I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay. And I don't have an ex officio report. I do have a, my first selectman's report, I'll keep it very brief. Those of you who may remember or know Harry Danos, he served the town for many years, he passed away recently. He was actually the architect that designed the building we're sitting in tonight, and a really dedicated man and one who had great love for the town of Eastlime. So I just wanted to recognize him tonight and thank him, and he was really an asset to the town. So thank you, Harry, for all you did, and we're still enjoying the building you designed, so.
Thank you for, thank you for bringing that up, because this actually is not the full building that he designed. Being parsimonious as Eastlime taxpayers are, they reduced the size of the building over his original plan. And I meant to bring the pictures tonight, and I forgot, but I have pictures of his original plan, which included that it would be extended further out in the back and possibly a second story, a third story on this building, which is probably a good thing, didn't happen. But people might also not know that he was the chief architect of the Hartford Civic Center. Yes, I wasn't going to mention that.
But you did. Well, certainly, I'm glad we were able to recognize him tonight. And other than that, I definitely don't have anything further to report. I don't think we have any communications. Is there any public comment? I think none, you know, selectmen's response. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn the February 5th, 2025, regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen at 8:41 PM.
Do I hear a second? All in favor, so we can probably say aye?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned. Candace, thank you, have a good evening.